It is six thirty on Monday, June sixteenth. And this is, um, this is a special meeting of the Franklin Public Library Board, um, Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees of Franklin, we notice our meetings, we record our meetings, and then we post the recordings and the minutes. So this is a regular library board meeting, or a special library board meeting, but it is a library board meeting. Um, but we are super excited that it is a special meeting with the Franklin Public Library Foundation. So, uh, we will be, uh, not following a regular board agenda. We will be following agenda that we have put together with the foundation. So, uh, just so you are aware that the meeting is posted and recorded and will be posted afterwards, so. Uh, in lieu of a regular roll call, uh, since I don't know everyone here, we are going to do introductions. So maybe just, you know, who you are and your connection to either the Board or the Foundation and your connection. So I will start. I am Maria Imp, the, um, member of the Board. I'm acting as president right now. Uh, my very first interaction with the Franklin Public Library was with the bookmobile at the end of my driveway. And I still remember walking into the back of the bookmobile and walking up and writing down my library card number and checking on my books, and it was awesome. And then, of course, the, uh, the library at City Hall. I happened to be in high school and college when this building was being built, so I don't have a lot of connection to that whole time period. Um, but then coming back and my kids grew up here. So I continue to grow up here. The girls will be here multiple times in the next couple of weeks, uh, at all the fun programs for the summer. So I'm definitely a ingrained Franklin resident and library user, and as is my family, so, alright.
I'm Alan Alexandrovich, I'm the treasurer of the Library Board. I'm gonna say it anyway. I really don't like to read.
That's good, that's fine.
Three kids, all born and raised in Franklin, and they're raising their own family now, too, so we've been around a long time.
I'll say my, uh, full name. I'm Terrance Spillers. I've been on the Board here for quite a while.
Yeah.
He's had numbers. Moved to Franklin in the eighties and, uh... Anyway, um, with that, I can't be defined. Anyway, we bought our house in nineteen ninety and over on Fifty First Street. A feeling of the mind to be going around.
Very good.
My name is Chris Dahl. I am, uh, Associate Director of the Library at UW Milwaukee. I also teach in a library school. I moved to Franklin about three years ago and I had to wait till someone finally got off the road. Prior to this, I've been moving here. I was the library director at the University of Dubuque, and I was on their, the Dubuque County, uh, Library Board for a hundred years. I was there.
I'm, uh, like you, I was on the Library Board. I thought Cheryl Donovan got chosen to study me in Milwaukee. And I was on for eighteen years. I was acting president for eleven or fifteen years, so, uh...
Wow.
I've been on Library Foundation for at least twenty-five years. And Annie over there started the Library Foundation. Oh, well, she got it. I'm very used to it, nineteen ninety-two. And then I grew up there. And, uh, probably the best thing I've done is I was on the Library Board for a while.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So I've been through all, to blow the comical things that you have. And dealt with more crap. So, uh, I've been involved in pretty much everything.
Yeah.
I'm Annie O'Plagia, and I know you all. And I just learned something new. Annie, I didn't know you started the Foundation. That's incredible. Thank you.
Well, I just studied, I just got the little pieces done.
That's great. Um, and, I mean, I'm the Secretary of the Board.
My name is Sally Smith. Um, I'm relatively new to the Foundation Board. Um, I knew Barb Wayzner from other organizations. Um, I've been in Franklin since nineteen eighty-five and was the Chief Financial Officer at Silverheart Seminary School of Technology up until two thousand and eighteen, when I retired. Um, prior to that, I was the Director of Business Operations at St. Louis College, which is also my own mother. So I've been in higher education all my life. So library work sounds very interesting. And, um, I will do some type of training or...
Hi, I'm Amanda Pound, and I am new to the Franklin Library Board this year. I'm the Director of Teaching Room for the School District. Um, and so it's been a fun new adventure to be a part of. I am not a resident of Franklin, but just very grateful to be here. Um, my library days go back to UW. I'm actually where I worked in for periodicals when I was in college. Back in the early nineties, when there were all kinds of periodicals. So I am connected and totally vested in the library. That's what it brings to a community.
And I'm Penny Woodcock, and I moved to Franklin nineteen seventy-nine and went to the little itty-bitty room that was our library at the time. This place needs help. And, uh, I served on the Library Board. I can't remember when, something in the very early eighties. Well, I think twenty years, and then I retired. And it was in private, sorry, we totally come to the library. But I was on the Friends Board prior to that and first started to help the library.
And I'm Barbara Weisner. Um, I've lived in Franklin since nineteen ninety-three. Um, did not have children who went through the school system, but I did have a niece and nephew who lived here. Um, and they lived in Franklin. And, uh, so I certainly participated with them at a lot of things here at the library. I'm not, I'm, I'm President of the Foundation Board, and I've been on the Foundation Board, I think about six years, maybe seven. And I was most, uh, just six years ago, I retired, um, as Executive Director of the Southsboro Chamber of Commerce.
Do you want me to introduce myself?
Sure, for the record.
Okay, for the record. I'm Jennifer Luffle. I've been library direct, no, library director since twenty-seventeen. Worked at the library since two thousand and two. And I apologize for the air conditioner. I wanted to get that on the record.
Yes, exactly. There is no air conditioning in the library for this joint meeting tonight.
Yeah. Hence the fan, which is a little loud.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
I was going to comment, since the fan is right behind Annie and I. So if everyone could just speak up, because you've got competition.
And if it's important, I'll try to repeat it. Annie, are you taking minutes tonight, or would you like me to?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, no problem, otherwise, okay. And just for the record also, uh, the other Board members who are not present and excused tonight are Judy Williams-Kalacki and Mike Carlovitz. So, uh, those are two other Board...
And Jason Craig.
Oh, and Jason Craig. What, did he let you know? Or, Jason Craig is another Board member.
Let's go ahead and excuse him, because he may have... When I did the original doodle poll, which was very clunky, and I hate doodle, but, um, he may have said he couldn't be.
Yes, okay. So those three are excused Board members. Uh, Jason is our aldermanic representative. So he's on the Common Council of the City. So, alright, so I heard a lot of, um, dates from a long time ago. Um, has there ever been, in any of your recollections, a joint meeting between the Board and the Foundation? So this is kind of, kind of exciting. We're, we're excited to move forward with this, with this new rela... I wouldn't even call it a relationship, because we have a relationship between the Board and the Foundation with our liaisons and such. And just with us knowing each other and, and that kind of thing. But I think that it's, you know, exciting that we're kind of making this official and, and moving forward with this, with this, uh, annual meeting is what we hope, hope to do going forward, so. Um, alright, so as I do with our Board meetings, we are on Agenda Item Three, which is public comment, and there's no additional public here to make comments. So we're gonna move right on to our business section. Um, all of you should have, either through email or a Board packet, um, the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-nine Strategic Plan of the Franklin Public Library. Um, and I hope some of you or most of you have been able to take a few minutes to look that over. I know the Board has done that. I don't know if it's been shared with the Foundation. Um, we are all library users, so we all know how to read. So I am not going to read it to you. Um, but I am just gonna highlight a couple of things. Um, in the generation of the, the Strategic Plan, we held community sessions, we did surveys, and we came up with, uh, four areas that the Library Board and staff were going to be focusing on for twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-nine. And that is, in the packet we received, Pages Two... Yeah, Two and Three are those four big goals. Um, our mission statement of the Franklin Public Library is dedicated to providing every member of our community with abundant opportunities to learn, explore, and connect. Um, and then the four goals are at, uh, following that. We have a community-focused goal, communication goal, library services and facility goal, and operational alignment goal. And then, under those goals, um, I know the Board has kind of gone through this, so this is, you know, not new to the Board, but maybe new to the Foundation members. Those four goals were then broken down into, uh, focused goals. So the goal statements on Pages Three to Five are the four-year goals, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, five-year goals of the Strategic Plan. So that's how that works. Those, those goals, the community, communication, operational, and services goals are, are broken down, uh, for that five-year plan. Every single year, the Library Board meets with Jennifer and other staff and comes up with annual goals. So those goals are then broken down year by year into, well, what, what of those goals are we gonna focus on this year? So starting on Page Six of your packet, it says, "First Year Activities." So those are the goals that Jennifer, her staff, and the Library Board are focusing on in twenty-twenty-five. Okay? Um, and they are broken down then, uh, into the activity and the strategic area. So I don't know if, um, if we wanna look at those and how they apply to the Foundation or what the relationship is there, or if we wanna save that for the brainstorming. Um, but I guess I just would ask the Foundation, have you seen these goals? And do you have any questions or comments about them?
Well, I don't think this, my comment would be, I just...
Yeah.
Just very chill.
Yeah.
And I was expecting it to be, I think, as on your activities, uh, people and personnel. I don't think I would, I think it's very strong. Unless you made up a spark for an area.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It's a very, I don't know, I couldn't believe what it's like.
And I think one of the really great things about the Board being made up of such a diverse, uh, group of people is that we have had people present and past. Uh, and I, I look to Amanda, because, you know, the school system is very goal and outcome-focused. So, prior to you and Anna Lee, you know, there have been a lot of people, uh, there... We have had people that have really helped us refine that. And so prior to this, um, prior to this Strategic Plan, our previous Strategic Plan, we had a lot of input from people who really helped us refine that process. You can't just say what you wanna do. You have to have specific goals, specific people assigned, specific timeline, specific outcome. So we have really over, not just with this Strategic Plan, but with the previous Strategic Plan, worked to really do that, so. Yeah, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
In preparing and working on, on the plan for this year and then also into the future, I'm not quite sure how to say this, but is there enough money in the budget to accomplish the things that you set out to do?
Well, there's never enough money, Barb.
That's what we're here for, right?
Right, um... I mean, I would just say, from my standpoint, we are absolutely cognizant of the resources we have to work with. But maybe, I don't know, Jennifer has any other insight into that? Um, the staff...
The reality is they have to make it work with the budget.
They have to, yeah, the staff is absolutely aware of the budget when these goals are made and they take on these tasks and these activities, which they're committing to have done by a certain time. Um, the budget is absolutely... They know what they're working with, yeah, and what they're not working with. Um, we are very lucky that we, that we have a little bit of a sense of the fact that our community is very supportive of the library. From everybody that we hear, we are a community hub that is repeated over and over again. With Franklin kind of lacking that downtown Main Street kind of a thing, the library is often considered as the center of the community for a lot of things. National Night Out is held here. The Parade is right there. You know, the, the trunk or treat is here. You know, the, the tree lighting overflow is to here and we do our, you know, the... So I think we are lucky that we have community support. Doesn't always translate into dollars for library operations and things, but we definitely have community support. And the staff knows that. Um, and they have developed a fairly good, um, outreach, you know... Well, it's an excellent outreach program, but I'm, you know, a fairly good sense of, of who they can reach out to.
And I, I believe, too, that other than just, just a Franklin community, you are really also a very regional library, because you are also serving many others outside of just Franklin. You have a good reputation throughout the entire region.
Yeah, we have a good reputation, yes. Yes, we do, yes. So, um, so, okay, any...
No, nothing else.
No, okay. Um, so we obviously are, um, you know, and we'll touch back on this at the end of this agenda here. Um, looking at our activities and at, um, next will be your fundraising activities. Uh, you know, ways to, um, just really integrate or integrate the Foundation a little bit more with what we are doing, what our situation is, and ways we can work together. I think that was the goal of this meeting. Instead of us just always saying, oh, Foundation, this might be good. This might, this is our wish list, but maybe, maybe a stronger connection there, so. Um, so hopefully, the Foundation can also use our Strategic Plan as a jumping-off point for some of your ideas and, and, and ideas for fundraising or, or whatever. So. Anything else you wanna say about the Strategic Plan?
Well, I would just mention in operational alignment how we have a specific goal of collaborating with the Foundation on fundraising and fundraising.
So that was ab, I don't wanna say absent. That was something that was not in the previous Strategic Plan. And as we developed this Strategic Plan, we really felt that that was important. You know, the Strategic Plan Committee, which was composed of a couple Board members and community members and staff members, just really felt like having a, a written-down goal to collaborate with the Foundation, and I keep pointing here, because you three are over here, um, was a worthy goal. So, um, it is, it is written down as one of our goals, so, so...
And I can see that it's scheduled for, uh, the second quarter, and that is now.
Exactly.
We're doing, we're accomplishing that, aren't we?
We are, yes. I, I would have to say that our previous Strategic Plan and, and then starting into this one, we, we have hit those quarterly goals pretty well. We, we, you know, maybe in year...
Eighty percent of the time.
Maybe you're, maybe you're one of the first Strategic Plan, you know, we had to figure it all out. But we've gotten a better sense of how to schedule those, and, and we're hitting them pretty well. So, yeah, yeah, so. Alright, any other comments about the Strategic Plan? Alright, um, then I'm gonna turn it over here to Barb for Business Item B to talk about the fundraising calendar. Which is Page Nine of your packet.
Yes. Our fundraising activities tend to all sort of fall into the fall months, September through, you know, December. And they're all listed here. I'll, I'll just go through them briefly. You're probably very well aware of, of all of them. But, uh, our Fall Literary Event, um, which, this is our fourth year of having a literary event, uh, where we bring in an author, and the intent is to make some money. And, uh, we've done well on every one of them. So this year, on September twenty-fifth, Nick Petrie will be our speaker. And, uh, he is a, we try to find local authors. He is a local author. He is a New York Times bestselling author. And I believe he's written, is it six books, six or seven books?
Eight.
Eight, okay, eight books.
I believe, eight, yeah.
I, I have read, I think his, not his most recent, but one of his recent books. And I'm not sure if they all are, but at least many of them are based in Milwaukee. All of them are?
Well, he does travel, but he always mentions Milwaukee.
Oh, okay. But the one that I read was like in Milwaukee. Started off with a murder at the public market. And he talks about all the streets and the places, and you say, yes, he's in Milwaukee. So it's kind of a, a cool, um, um, author to have and a connection for us. So, uh, we're looking forward to that event.
Can I, can I ask, what is your marketing plan for that event, being that he is so ingrained in Milwaukee? Uh, you know, that he uses our city as his setting?
Well, um, we're starting the marketing now. And we, I mean, like, I don't know that we'll do anything different, but we always Facebook boost it, you know, to try to get people from outside of Franklin.
It was already in the, um, calendar.
It's in the calendar, it's on... If it's not on the website, it will be this week.
Very soon.
And we're, we'll start getting sponsorships.
Okay.
So we've been very fortunate, uh, in the past with sponsorships, um, to help to support it and to, uh, you know, make sure we make money on this event. And they've been very pleasant, well-attended events. So we're really pleased about that. As a library, we should have a literary event every year. It just seems like it makes sense. Then our calendar raffle, I think this is our third year. Um, those sales will begin shortly, and so from January first through the end of March, uh, people can, can perhaps win the raffle. Um, and that has been also rather successful. We've done well with that.
And we have a license to sell raffles.
Yes. Every, every year, we sell more than we sold the previous year.
Oh, good, yeah.
And, uh, personally, for me, it's a great way to take care of those Christmas presents for somebody who you have no idea what you should give your brother-in-law. So he gets a chance to win some money. They never do, though, but that's okay, but that's okay. Um, and then also, the library sells coffee. And that's done right here at the library, the Stone Creek Coffee. For the second year, uh, we will be holding a holiday rummage sale. First one was last year. It was quite a event. This entire room was filled with holiday, Halloween, Christmas, maybe even Easter stuff, that people wanted to get out of their house. And we made, I forget, sixteen hundred?
No, six thousand.
Six thousand, oh gee, very good.
I think...
And a lot of people said, this is wonderful. I'm gonna bring all my stuff next year. Everyone was trying to clear out their house, so, um...
We are changing it this year, though, because last year, I had no idea what was, the response was gonna be in our back area. Got overwhelmed with stuff and we learned a lot.
Sure.
We learned a lot about what we don't wanna do anymore. So, we're gonna have one weekend when they drop things off, and they'll go right in this room. Everything will come in here, everything will be sorted on the tables. Bernie, I'll get Bernie.
I have a price for it.
Oh. So, yeah, we're, we figured out how to hopefully do it a little bit smoother than we, than last year. But like I said, first year, we had no clue what we were gonna be dealing with, so...
So I, I think, you know, from people who are here, um, they were very pleased and plan to be back, so. I think, um, it should be a good, a good thing again. Then our holiday bake sale on December thirteenth, which is usually in conjunction with another Christmas event that's being held here.
With the city or...
With the children's department.
With the children's, children's event, yeah, yes. So, and that has gone over rather well also, so...
Has the city, do I have that from this side?
Nobody's approached, last year they did not. Uh, this year, I have not been approached. The library wanted to kind of get away from hosting the city-wide tree light, tree lighting. We don't really have a tree, our tree that we used to use is horrible. And they do it over at City Hall now.
Right.
So, I think that's a better, they have a better tree, too.
So one of the important things, I think, about our fundraisers is that we have very strong support from our Foundation Board members who volunteer and really help out on, on, on every one of these events. And then we have a number of other volunteers who have stepped up and said, well, I'll help do something. And, and we are gathering more of those names and more of those people to be our volunteers on some of these events, because otherwise, you know, the, the Board, uh, has a lot going on in those months. So I think that's one thing we would ask the Library Board to also be volunteers at some of these events and/or also recommend to some other people who you know who might want to give back to the library in some way. And it's always a fun thing to do.
Right, right. I did notice, you didn't have the milkman game on here.
Oh, well, I think, yeah, you know, I shouldn't have that on there. Because it already happened, so it's kind of out of my mind.
I suppose, yeah, yeah, I suppose.
That's right.
But, um, I know that a couple of us were at the milkman game. Um, but it's always nice if we know ahead of time or if we're really, you know, that, um, that the Board members could also help out with our fundraising for the library, because the Foundation, obviously, is supporting what we as a Board are trying to accomplish. And so giving our support to their activities is important, so...
And the Foundation pretty much gives us everything that they make during a year.
Right, exactly. So just keep us informed of details and your needs and...
And we'll send out a request for volunteers every now and then.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
I just wanna bring up a couple of incentives.
Sure.
That we're truly, really, 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 uh... Now, all these other things, that's weird, lots of, something in the newsletter. Especially for state...
Right.
But, these, these things are, are hundreds of colleges, colleges. And that stuff could be... So, we wanna get her name out there, make sure that, right? And tries to get a little, probably better head for a season.
Well, that Yaskawa or whatever it is that just signed up, has anybody hit up some of you again?
Right, right, I don't, probably, yeah.
So those are, you know, those are some things that can ultimately get involved. And so you've got Michelle was on, so I would be working with her, maybe him to help us. And I can tell you, the mayor was part of her board and foundation at the same time. And they came to meetings and, and, I mean, interested in doing things.
Sure, yeah. So maybe. Right.
Yeah, because that's how we got money from Northwestern, because they were moving in, they wanted to do a splash, which they did.
Right. And that's exactly what I was just going to say. I know one of these first-year activities in our strategic plan, which I would, you know, recommend, maybe the foundation take a look at and maybe with Jennifer and Annie as a liaison. But looking at, I'm looking at it here. I think we're looking at the floor plan of the library. And maybe as, and I don't know if that's in the, these big goals or in the yearly goals. But as they look very closely at, okay, it's on, on page four. Library service and facility goals. Um, and I know we're kind of moving into the brainstorming things here, but, um, you know, that evaluating the overall space needs, you know, maybe that would be an opportunity for the foundation or outreach committee to, to reach out to some of those newer businesses or businesses that maybe haven't been, you know, highlighted in a while to say, oh, do you want to sponsor a new area in the library or, or something like that? So maybe that's a discussion that could be had at, at these different levels, yeah.
I'd like to just add, Annie mentioned Yaskawa. I was at an event last Thursday or Friday at Yaskawa. I'm on the Economic Development Commission, so I was invited to this event. There were about a hundred people there. And the president of Yaskawa Company from Japan was there.
Wow.
And this is pretty mind-boggling, I didn't realize this, but Franklin is now the North and Central American headquarters for this company. Yes. They are closing their facility in Oak Creek and moving their work here. Same thing with a facility in Illinois that's going to move here.
Wow.
Initially about 700 people, employees, high-end engineering-type jobs, and that's going to grow. Um, they're in the business park. And in preparation for this meeting, I was thinking an introduction of some of their people to the library would be very appropriate. And, you know, just to introduce them to the library without asking for money yet.
Right, right.
But, um, but let them know that we're here and we can be supportive to them and to their employees, many of whom will be moving into the area. So it's, um, it is a real, very exciting, um, event for, for the city. And I, I can't explain to you exactly what they do, because it's all very electronic and having to do with computers and whatever. But anyway, it's, it's very advanced manufacturing.
And maybe that's not, I mean, the library board has, at, at different times, talked about, oh, we should do an open house for the common council or just the city employees. So they know what, everything we have and what we do. But a business type, you know, especially for new businesses moving in. I mean, if they're bringing in, you know, X amount of employees from Japan, let's say, to, to start off, then do we need to adjust our materials so that we have materials available for those families? And working with, they're bringing families, working with the school to make sure we have what the families need here at the library. So, and even having programs here that would help them produce Franklin too.
So that would be a wonderful opportunity, I think, to connect with Yaskawa.
Yeah.
What about a virtual tour?
There we go. That would be awesome, yeah. Maybe in conjunction with the city. If, if the city does anything, again, working with the common council, if the city is promoting, to these new companies and these new employees, a city video, making sure that the library is included on that, yeah. That's a good point.
Very true.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any comments or questions about the fundraisers? So do you, um, I guess my only question was, other than the milkman game, you know, any other ideas for fundraising at any other time than the fall? I know we touched on that a little bit during our meeting. Do you feel the need to, to expand that? Or does the board feel like there needs to be balance in that or? I know it's hard.
I think one of the things we did, I think, mention when we met to put together the agenda was, and I think there already is this in, maybe in place, but sort of a legacy type of, um, approach.
Right.
And I'm not sure if we know, if we have a list of people that said to us, yes, you're listed in my will, you're, you're going to be a, a, then are, you know, you'll be there. You'll be receiving some money at some point in the future. But I don't think we've really promoted that and had some benefit to it.
Sure, sure.
So that's something that we may want to explore.
Okay.
So, it's possible.
And as a board, are you aware that Annie and Jennifer and the staff have approached us to make requests?
Absolutely, yeah.
I report on that. We report.
Yeah, yes. And we are so grateful.
And our policy is pretty much Jennifer knows.
Yeah.
And I've talked to her all the time, aside, just saying, okay, here's what we got.
Right.
And we bought these tables.
Right.
These were like eleven-four thousand dollars. So she, she knows what we get. She's looking out of the back. And basically, we have a minimum that we don't want to go under because we want to keep the foundation. We never want to go through the foundation, even the big work we started in.
Right.
So, and it also provides us some interest now that twenty-three to forty percent, we can get that money back. So we want to keep a floor.
Right.
So we're always operating as a foundation. And other than that, you know, we're not looking to save, we're looking for something.
And one of the other really big-ticket items we purchased about, I think it's two years ago, was the patio furniture.
Right.
Which the library needed and we said, you know, go for it, and up to like $10,000 worth.
We don't really care, we just need to know what you want.
Exactly.
I don't, yeah, I don't think you guys have ever turned down a request.
Not on the career end?
No.
So first of all, Jennifer and Annie are excellent at communicating all of that. So we are well aware of that and we are so thankful. We are so thankful for the way the foundation, you know, supports the mission of the library is really what it comes down to. You know, the board works within the constraints of the budget as best we can. And we are so thankful that, for the hard work that the foundation does to provide some of those things that aren't always accessible through the budget.
Well, I was going to say, I think that's important, I want to put this on record, saying that it's not the foundation's duty to finance the library, but to finance those extra things that the budget doesn't cover. Like, for example, the aug computers, patio furniture, those are not things that necessarily will be covered in a library.
That's what we just bought, yeah, that was about almost eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I would, I would really, and I know I've asked you this before, I would really like it if you would put together a wish list of big-ticket items, that we could approach these corporations and foundations that are coming in and say, here, do you want, do you want to be part of this? Is there anything that you're interested in sponsoring? If you could put together like a tiered list that we could present to people. I mean, and as the foundation, we could get together and figure out a plan to approach these companies. But we need.
Yeah.
Numbers and actual things.
Items, yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
I mean, I know that you'll, I don't know if they've done it, but the children's librarians have a list. And I've asked them to put it on the website, but I can have them send it, yeah. And especially for the new children's area.
Yeah.
We're going to have a lot of things on the wish list for that.
Maybe not like a huge, this is going to cost 300, this is going to cost, but like.
Big thing.
This is going to cost two grand, this is going to cost five grand, this is going to cost 10 grand. Do you know what I mean?
I mean, there's stuff, the stuff that they have on their list is big.
Is that maybe something that you guys could?
After summer reading stuff?
Yeah, I don't. But not just the children's section, I mean.
No, I know that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, new tornices.
Oh, you really are.
I was going to say, the other thing that I think we, we cite, not only asking for certain things, big-ticket items, but I was thinking that, you know, I had a neighbor who supports things and says, what do you buy with the money that you raise? And I think we don't give the feedback.
Right.
And that would be helpful, and even the literary event to just say, maybe make a list of thank you for your pages, whatever, and this is what we were able to do.
And usually I do, I think when I get up and speak.
I try to respond to it if someone asks me personally, but it might be something.
It also could be something I could put in the newsletter, city newsletter.
Yes.
Did you know?
Yeah, or thank you to the foundation for purchasing.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I work with the committee at the Where Nature Center. And we do the Ladies Night Out every July. And when we publicize it, we, we say in our publicity that, just for example, two years ago, this event, this year is going to fund the, uh, the, we were doing a bathroom that was accessible to adults with disabilities. So that was just right out there in promoting the event. And so, you know, people knew that when they were thinking about coming to the event, that their donations were going to, you know, putting in this new bath, you know, that kind of thing. So, yes, you know, just if we had a, some, if you could tell people right up front what it was going to.
I think we did that last time with the patio furniture, didn't we?
Right, see, yeah.
And the children's, yeah, so.
And I think a couple of things.
For the literary event, for the literary event, we usually have it on the flyer, this is what the money is going to.
And I think our annual letter, the fundraising letter.
Our annual letter has a list of what's been.
List things too.
The larger things, the tree, the fireplace, the patio furniture.
Well, all right, this is all kind of sort of morphing into the next item of just reviewing our budget. And so the foundation can kind of see what is coming in and what we're spending our money on, or what the library needs to spend our revenue on, and then, uh, the need for some of the foundation support. So we are turning to our treasurer, who is the master. Our master.
Okay, you've got some pages?
Yes.
Look like that? The first column on the first page is the actual budget that we're using for 2025. Total revenues is $1,550,700 and you can see that vast majority coming from property taxes. The rest of that first page is, if you look at the financials, it's two areas, personal services and employee benefits. In essence, that's the cost of labor here at the library. That makes up 76.88% of the library's, uh, revenue, goes about.
Which we do not as a board control at all.
No.
We have nothing to do with that. So 76% of what we are giving is employee costs.
And the city gives us those numbers.
Yes, yes. So up to, I think, the very, just the first line on the second page, maybe?
Nope. According to what our financials show, it's through workers' compensation. But we don't.
Oh, okay, so just the first page?
Yeah, we have nothing for employer HSA kind of.
Oh, okay, all right.
Of COVID.
All right, gotcha.
Then moving right along, the, the next little grouping is an area contractual services and that goes through sundry contractors. That's $49,083 and 3.16% of the revenue. The next area is supplies from postage through e-bucks. That's a total of $32,552.09%. And servicing charges from telephone through MIGless computer is $96,205, 6.2% of the revenue. And the next area is facility charges and that has numbers in water through the interdepartment charge allocation, pay cost. That's an item, the city works out something that whatever services they provide, this is what they're charging us. And you can see that's one of the larger ones, electricity. That total for that area is $197,423, 12.73% of the budget. Then the next page, capital outlays is $145,000. And the biggest one there is library materials, the books, the DVDs, CDs, et cetera. And we're looking for computer equipment, the $40,000. If we're going to step up on that one, that'd be great. And ridiculous. $145,137, 9.35%. So the total appropriations, $1,712,748, is 110.44% of the revenue. So we've already identified we're going to overspend by 10.44%.
Is that the 162?
That's $1,712,748.
Yep.
Okay, that's the over.
That, that's a 10%.
Gotcha, yes, okay, okay.
Okay, that's Fund 15. We have two funds, 15 is most of the, uh, operating expenses. Fund 16, frankly, I don't know why we have it, why we don't combine some of these. But what we do is we. we do is we take money from Fund 15, move it to Fund 16. So if you look at pages 13 and 14, you'll see that the total estimated revenue for 2025 of Fund 16 is $60,890. Coincidentally, that is the total appropriations, because funds move from 15 to 16 to make a balance. Anybody still awake? Numbers put a lot of people to sleep. Any questions?
I just want to point out one thing. I knew there's a book I asked him to give out, just for a history of the city. We built this library, and it cost $5.5 million. The year before we built it, Mr. Franklin paid $140,000, all that, for this. A year and a half after we opened, it took in $140,000. $240,000 dollars. And I went to come and go, it's all three years, seven. What do you, do you argue? Made and found, up to $1,500,000. This was the goal of this. And this, this library was a financial windfall, and it was an absolute blow.
Yes.
And if you don't know the history, some of the history of the city, this library thought about support. This was a referendum, they didn't go to them, we need that guy. This had to be one of them, council's been doing it. And when we did go to them, they didn't think of anything else. I have to remember, Aldrin Burton said, what do you think the conference would say? They said, I said, you don't like the cost, not to exceed $5,000, we came in $300,000. And I said that, he said, that sounds just fine, he thought it's going down, but no, we got $6,000,000 of it. That's the history. You know, people talk about the financials, it's a plus, it's not a minus. It really is.
I think if people ever ask, the former treasurer of the city of Franklin figured out how much people pay in poverty taxes for the library, and for a house that's worth about $400,000, which is kind of the median in Franklin, the amount was like $99 a year. $99 a year.
Take out four books and you're done.
What's that?
Take out four books and you pay for it.
Well, and that's a statistic the foundation can use.
Yes.
You know, that residents of Franklin are paying an average of $100 a year to the library. That is the equivalent of purchasing four books. You know, so if you are checking out more than four books a year at the library, you're getting your tax dollar's worth, and should you be contributing more, knowing that that's all you're really contributing to, to this building and this.
Alan, how many books do you check out over here?
He checks out movies.
On CDs?
Or CDs, yeah, you do CDs.
Look it, look it, he's got a $5 bag of. I think I pay more than that in fines every year. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Almost kidding.
Jennifer sent you a thank you card?
Just about. I, I'm still pushing for the tax write-off for my library fines, for me and my children. No, I know, it's not gonna happen, but anyway.
Just write it off. You can write off anything that you have to. I'll still leave on it, and then he makes it back.
Anyway, okay, all right. Any other questions for Alan regarding, especially from the foundation members? We look at this stuff every month. We haven't, I don't say memorized, but we understand Alan's lingo, so if any of the foundation members have any questions about that, or his processes or whatever. All right. Then the last item on our agenda is really just any other final comments or ideas or brainstorming, you know, or, or asking, you know, questions from the foundation to the board, or from the board to the foundation. How can you support us? How can we support you? What kind of strategies do we see going forward to, to make this not just a, Annie reports every month at our library board meeting what's happening with the foundation, and she reports to the foundation what's happening to the board, but to strengthen this, so it's mutually beneficial? So any other, and we've done a lot of it already, I believe.
Yes, we have, yes.
But any other comments, ideas? Any other things we want to share with each other?
On, on these fundraisers?
Yes.
Things like the calendar raffle, where do we promote that?
Website, Facebook, city newsletter.
So we don't have some?
Funds in the library, there's fines in the library.
They're out in the library?
Yeah.
Yes.
And the Stone Creek Coffee, is that a good coffee? I don't know.
Yeah, I buy a lot.
It is, yeah.
Okay, do we just hand out samples?
During certain events, like during the holiday rummage, yes. So that people can try it. I have like little sample cups.
Okay, but not like at the mornings?
It is the, it is the coffee that we sell at the desk, it's the coffee that's over there.
Oh, okay.
Do we have then a bag that says, buy this for X amount?
Yes, I mean, Laura, Laura, Laura Manos, too many Lauras. Laura Gravender puts a display up in the, in front of the library.
And is that the same coffee you sell by the cup?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It is.
That's a good sign, that's quite a test.
Right, yes.
I think you need, has it made a difference or not?
Which, you mean the yellow sign I made?
Dollar fifty.
Oh, yeah, that's when I had to raise the price when.
I just noticed that I, that's a good idea, whoever did it.
I think we got a $15 bump in coffee. So I had to raise the price, so I made a new sign. Thank you for liking my sign.
Just changes like that. I think that's, we're bombarded with visual stimuli.
Yeah.
How do you?
Have you contacted Stone Creek for a donation? No.
They did donate the brewer, the, the coffee brewer that we use.
Oh, okay.
So that was, yeah.
So that we can keep buying our coffee.
Right, right. Does the board, do the, something we should keep in mind, though, too, like, the board members or foundation members have any other suggestions for fundraisers or businesses or community members that may be willing to partner with the library for certain things? You know, would be important. I know I approached somebody about donating to the nature center, and they were like, oh, yeah, we donated to the library. I'm like, good enough, good enough, you don't have to, you know, that kind of thing, but you know, just people that you use and people that you interact with, you know.
We had another one, it was a children's segment, I thought it was about.
You mean the chiropractor?
Oh, the chairs, yeah, that was really nice.
These are people that are looking for publicity. Usually coming in, that's the key word.
Yeah.
You're gonna get them, just like on the flax and whatever, you gotta get them in your building when it's new, because otherwise you're not, you're not gonna, it's so hard to get them.
Yeah, looking at the newsletter and the new businesses coming in.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
That's the part.
Yeah.
And we all gonna be looking at it.
Right, right.
All together.
So I know one question, one of our board members often has, is, is, and Mike is not here tonight, but he is really adamant about promoting sustaining members, and is it possible, and I think it is possible, but is it promoted? That if I want to give $25 a month to the library as, as a sustaining member, I mean, is that something as a direct, you know, not deposit?
Withdrawal.
Withdrawal from my account? And I think you can set that up, but is that really promoted? Like, become a sustaining member, give blah, 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 and I suggested to Barb and Jennifer, then they can get a free water bottle.
Yeah.
Or some other swag from our library thing, you know, and, and maybe that's something the foundation could promote, too. Like, those of you that, that are giving regularly every month, maybe we have something like the volunteer breakfast, a sustaining member reception, or a behind-the-scenes tour some night, it doesn't even have to be, you know, what if we give all our sustaining members a chance to walk through an after-hours, you know, when the library's open for, you know, something to encourage people to regularly donate? So that, that I know is something that our mem, you know, some of our board members.
There's got to be a mechanism that does that, because somebody's got to send, like, when I, when you do your Amazon or your Netflix, I don't do anything, they send something. So that means somebody from the library would have to have a system in order to trigger the withdrawal.
Right.
Well, we use PayPal.
And that's.
PayPal does allow that. We get, we do have three sustaining members, I'm one of them. So, yeah, we have three sustaining members for the foundation.
So you don't have to do anything?
And then the, the annual letter I send out, I mention being a sustaining member.
But is there an incentive? Is there an incentive to be a sustaining member? And what if we got 10 people to commit to $25 or $50 a month to the library? And they don't have to think about it, they don't have to think about writing a check, they don't have to think about, you know, going on to the library website every month, it's just automatic. I think people, that's easy for people, if they sign up for that.
Or some people can go through work.
That's the other thing, are we?
Because we have, I, I forgot, we have another one who donates through her employer every month, and it's a pretty significant, it's like a pretty significant amount.
What program is that, or what?
It's through her employer.
Just the matching gift?
Matching, yeah. You can, you can pick which charitable organization.
So that would be another thing that maybe the foundation could put out there to some of these, you know, suggest to some employers, too.
Well, there's one thing to do. I think Northwestern is still paying the $500 if you do 40 hours of volunteer work, but maybe we have to talk to Northwestern.
Do it real quick, before they shut Franklin's building down.
That's right.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's not really a monetary thing, this would maybe more be for Jennifer, but if there was some large, larger type of project, a lot of corporations, you can volunteer a day and get paid for it.
That's what Northwestern, because we had two, you and Jan.
Jan, and then I think, oh, there was another one, who used to work in the children's area, this man, this lady, she was.
I think Kohl's, I know, does that, they give their employees, you know. So connecting with some, maybe some of these new employers in Franklin, or the larger ones, if we could identify something that maybe we wouldn't need money for, but we'd need volunteers for, you know, and then combine it with financial. Yes. Oh. Okay.
We just take notes.
All right.
One thing I was gonna say, it would be really nice if the, if we ever did get a large donation for the foundation, and I mean large, like, like.
$25 million?
I'd be happy with less than that, but to consider like hiring a part-time person, that would.
Oh, that would be administrative.
Because it's hard for me and Laura to do our library work and then the foundation work on top of it.
Yeah.
I'm like the only library director in the, in the system who.
Well, you already said what we're gonna do. Where was it, Chorwood, when you got the money? Was it Chorwood got the million?
Five million.
Be quiet, forgot how you got some, then you announced.
Which is what they did, they came up with a policy for the donation, and then they announced it. So, yeah, and there's other libraries not to be named that are gonna be getting significant amounts of money.
Bananas.
So someday, I'm hoping before I retire that it happens, because over the years, I've had people tell me, oh, the library's in my will. Now, if somebody tells me that, I would actually probably ask for specifics, because I'd be like, hey, make sure it's the Franklin Public Library Foundation.
I think that would, you'd have more control.
And to find out their name, and to say, hey, do you want to be on our legacy list, you know? So if somebody said that to me today, it would be different, this is when I was working at the reference, the information desk, and they would just be like, oh, the library's in my will.
You know, other organizations do that, like the Milwaukee Rep and the Symphony. You know, you, you can tell them, yes, you're in my will, but they then send you a form, and they just ask for some basic information. It's not very detailed, you don't have to give a, you know, specific amount, but there's a form, then it's on file, and they, they probably watch the obituaries, then, I don't know. I'm not sure. Here's a comment for the foundation. So as library board president, I know, no, well, let me finish my sentence. I have never been sent a year-end letter.
Well, I will send you a letter.
So my question is, what, what kind of a special person do you need to be to get a year-end letter from the foundation? And why, why isn't everybody getting them? And I will tell you why I'm not getting one, because I have not made a huge donation to the library. Or a public donation to the library. Maybe my donations, I have not necessarily.
Your donations are the fines.
Time and fines, yes, for right now, but I'm just saying, I think you're missing people. If you're sending letters out to people who have already donated, you're, you are missing people.
Well, I could tell you.
And so I don't, maybe a newly generated list of, of some other types of people, because I've never been sent a letter.
Believe me, you will get one this year.
Maybe I will. No, but I guess if I haven't been sent one, yeah.
We've targeted.
Yeah, I don't.
Tell you that, so you're living on the wrong.
Okay, I'm on the wrong side of the tracks, all right.
You have done that, even.
Yeah, okay.
You can't do the whole city, and the city newsletter is out there for you.
Right.
Everybody's seeing that.
But we have, but we have looked at large square feet.
Right, okay, and I guess that's my question, and that, so now I know, yeah, yeah.
So we do, like Dennis said, I have my core list that I was, that was handed over to me. I use that list, and then every, almost every year, we add a neighborhood on.
Oh, okay, all right.
And, you know, we might get like two bites from that, and then they get added to the list.
Right.
Anybody who just spontaneously makes a donation to the library gets added to the list.
I'll just start sending checks instead of cash.
And that's, part of that is because it's 70 cents a pop.
Yeah, it's expensive.
I am, she's getting a letter. The whole board's getting a letter this year.
Yes, they sure will. That's why we want to.
Do you get a special rate?
Yes, for sure.
No, it might be, I don't know.
As a city thing or a long?
I don't know, but we got something in the mail that I think it was from a charitable organization, and it said the potions they had on it was 6.4 cents.
No, that's, yeah, that's bulk mail, but you need to have a certain number, like hundreds of pieces.
Oh.
It's a mess to do that. Have you ever done the bulk mail?
You have to sort everything through.
And as we sorted it.
Again, when we get our part-time, when the foundation gets their part-time person, we will definitely look into that.
Or would it be possible to put that letter in the city newsletter, just like the school district puts a insert?
There would be a cost to it.
There still would be?
Because those, the city gives us that one page at no cost. Any additional pages we have to pay for, but that is a possibility.
You could ask what the cost would be.
It's not that much, it's the actual just cost of the paper and cost of printing.
Maybe when you announce whatever your big renovation is going. Maybe when you manage, whatever your big renovation is going to be, yeah, children's area, whatever, that might be the time that we decide, because that's kind of like a building fund.
Yeah.
So, it would be, right.
That's a good idea.
All right.
I wanna say it's only like a couple hundred, two to three hundred dollars extra. It's not, it's not that much.
We probably spend almost that on postage for our list that we have now, possibly, no?
Not, not quite. Probably seventy times fifty, sixty, sixty times seventy.
Well, July, it's going up again.
Yes.
So, I better go buy my forever stamps now.
Get your stamps now.
How many people are on that list?
Uh, probably about, I'd have to count, I wanna say sixty. I-
Yeah, about that.
So, I, some people drop off, like, if there's been a few years we haven't, I've sent letters and they haven't responded, they drop off the list.
All right. Any other? What?
You know, Barb's compiling the list of volunteers, that sounds like a good-
Well, volunteer job.
Volunteer job.
All right, any other comments about, either way?
I would just say thank you, if you ever had the idea, I, you know, most folks, I think it's been beneficial for me anyway, for everybody, so thank you.
Yeah.
We're hoping to make it an annual.
I was just gonna say, I, I hope we are, are planning on this being an annual thing, so.
Yes.
All right. Any last words? Thank you for your time this evening. Um, for the board members, our next meeting is Monday, we do it today, but at six, not six-thirty. So-
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Annie is our, like, automatic, okay, Alan?
I do it here, too.
Oh, okay, all in favor? Anybody opposed or abstaining, motion carries.
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody.
It's seven forty-three.
Seven forty-three, all right.